Those aren't the first words you want to say.
Good evening, sorry about that. All right. Hi, everybody. 7:04 and we'll call this meeting to order the school committee for Wednesday, December 20th. And I just want to make sure that Member Vargis is able to be joining. There she is. Okay. Hi, Anna. Hello. Okay, so we will start by pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so first, we just need to approve our agenda for tonight. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? All right, then we'll consider that approved and get started with citizen speak. Citizen speak is when we set aside up to 15 minutes for members of the community to join us and share their perspectives for up to three minutes at a time. Is anybody here for citizen speak? I don't think so. Hello? Anybody online? If you're here for citizen speak, please just raise your hand so that we can promote you.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. In that case, we can move along to the superintendent's report.
Great. All right. Well, there is a lot going on right before break. Excited for the agenda items below and excited to welcome Colicott here in a moment. Before we do that, just a few updates that are going on in MPS. One, priority report, which I've been talking about and we're kind of putting that together. I mentioned it's turning into a fairly large document, so we're working to hone in on that and make it as concise and clear as possible. I think that is going to be important part of our planning right now in looking at how we move from priority report to engaging with staff to talk about what does this mean and where we headed. We have our second full PD day is in March. We're going to be bringing the entire staff together, which I'm really excited about. I'll be probably bringing everyone into the auditorium in the same way that we did at the beginning of the year. Talk about kind of my learning over the last, you know, eight, nine months by that point. And then designing work throughout the day in large groups and small groups to kind of start to build out that implementation plan that we talked about. One of the challenges that I foresaw was really kind of having the face-to-face time with staff. Surveys are great. Getting information from buildings or staff meetings are great, but having like a day together as a staff, I think, will be very powerful and important. So I'm really excited about that, that aspect of kind of to be able to get that day essentially. Personnel update, so we, our Tucker principal position is closing today, on the 20th. And our director of DIB and assistant superintendent positions are also open and screening committees are being put together for those. We will be, the process will begin, the Tucker principalship in earnest in the first week when we come back and Bev is on that committee. So that is going to be exciting. Garth has been, as I mentioned, Garth has been spending time at Tucker. Garth, do you want to share a little bit about kind of the community outreach you've been doing?
Yeah, we have two community coffee and conversations, just talking about my role there, setting up some times to continue the conversation, keeping the community updated on what's going on with the search, providing feedback in terms of ongoing initiatives there and some new staffing changes, like a new music teacher, full-time BCBA and some other staffing pieces there.
And then plans for more of that, right?
Yep, monthly.
Yeah, that's great. The big news, we had a meeting yesterday at Curry College. I shared with you all that we have been in conversation with them over the last probably six to eight weeks, talking about the potential for leasing their early childhood center. We had a meeting where four of us went. It was me, Glenn, Danielle and Bernadette. And they had five or six people from their team. We kind of started to build a kind of shared perspective about prospectus about what this could look like, the partnership. Really exciting. They're, they took a big step forward and I would say that we've got a number of, of, we were talking about hurdles, I don't think they're really hurdles. We have a number of steps we need to take to get to the finish line, but we are, I think, well on the way. So that, I think it's quite, I mean, it's moving towards happening is what I wanted to share, which, you know, as you all know, we've been looking for space for quite some time, had Point 32 last year, which fell through. So this is, I think, more beneficial than Point 32 because it's a collaboration with a local institution that will be mutually beneficial. We talked about the potential for dual enrollment and looking at developing that. They're excited to have a more seamless connection with us in terms of internships and opportunities. They bring a lot of educational, pedagogical, you know, strength and skill to the table as well and talked about wanting to partner with us. So it's, I think this is going to be the beginning of a deepening of what we've had, which is, you know, we partner in a few things, but I would say we're not, there's a lot of room for growth in that partnership. And Jaganth also is the new president is, I think is a great person to work with and has that kind of vision. So I'm really excited to work with him and I see great potential.
Can you remind us what the sort of, I don't remember, sort of like classrooms and sort of what that means for us in terms of how much, how many of our kids are put there?
Yeah. So they have, their current layout is six classrooms. We have a total of eight between Cunningham and Tucker. We have to, over the next month or so, maybe even three weeks, you know, talk about what makes the most sense in terms of our staff, in terms of what's most beneficial for students. It's a great space. It's a big improvement over our current space. I mean, if you've walked around Cunningham, it's tight. So I think it's going to, in terms of student impact, I think it's going to be really beneficial. And we need to look at all the kind of factors and Bernadette is spending lots of time. I got a few communications early this morning. She's, after that meeting, she's really, really thinking about it. So, yeah, I think, I think probably mid-January we'll have a really good sense of what makes sense and, you know, she's really on it in terms of communication and wanting to make sure that parents know because right now in terms of the timing, January 11th, I think, is the, is our date for the preschool information night, is that correct?
That's close. If it's not the 11th, it's right around there.
It's right around there. So we're, you know, we want to, if we can, we want to take a few steps forward so that we can share something more definitive with parents. And some parents are in a decision-making process to decide if they're going to go to an MPS preschool or private. So we want to be, we want to have as much information to share as we can.
Well, Curry Street is beautiful and they have a nice playground, they have ample parking. It would be a great location for us.
Yeah, yeah. Glenn, anything you want to add on that in terms of your work with the town?
Yeah, I spoke with the town administrator today and back and forth with town councils, well, the person in town council who does acquisitions and so forth. We believe there's a reasonable way forward to accomplish this without going through a full RFP process and so forth because it is a unique acquisition. And so we're looking at the process that we go through. You know, basically we have to show there aren't no comparable places in town that are available, which is terribly hard. You know, we, we seem to have a path forward that won't, that will allow us to, you know, potentially get in there next fall. That was my biggest worry was that through various procurement things, it could lag. But Danielle Whitmore's reaching out to Desi. We've reached out to them once before when we're looking at Point 32. We don't think that's going to be a major impediment since they are our staff and our students and our curriculum, they're just in a new building. So they'll basically just want to know that the building is, you know, ADA compliant, compliance and all those various different things they need. So again, they're, they're steps, they're not at this point hurdles. So we think we can, we think we can get there.
Is this a lease or buy?
It's a lease, yeah. I mean, our, you know, and this could change, but the current plans for the new school include the preschool. So we are talking with them about the Curry, about a five-year lease. And I don't think Curry's long-term 10, 15, 20-year plan is to continue to lease it, but to find a way to bring it back into, into Curry. One of the reasons I understand that they decided to close it was financial. And so I think this is a good step for them in terms of both the partnership with the town, which I think is significant, and also financially to kind of get them back on to, to build out a plan themselves so that that will give them time as well. So I think it, I think it's a, you know, definitely mutually beneficial. And we wouldn't want to commit to something that was a long-term, you know, with the new school in play right now.
What's the, your kind of drop dead date? If you have one at this point where it's like, we kind of need to get through, if not all these steps, at least, you know, Y number of, in order to feel like you have confidence going into the fall that this is a space that you can actually utilize?
So I think we're, we're ascertaining that right now. I think the first one is communications, the programmatic design, I think, is, is front and center because of the need to communicate with parents. So I would say that's the first deadline that we're, we're moving towards. I don't think the, the Desi licensure is going to be very challenging. I don't think the, you know, the, the work that Glenn is doing with town council, I think that's going to be fairly straightforward. So I don't, I think we'll hit all the marks on those things. I think we just need to, like I said, the programmatic piece, I think, is the, is the most time-sensitive just because of decision-making that families are having. And we also want to, I think, we also want to share the excitement about this too. And so that's, you know, we don't want to get lost in just getting things done where we lose sight of like, this is actually going to be really cool.
I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you, we also have to figure out how to pay for it.
Have you all gotten to the place where?
We don't have a number yet. We have a concept.
Conceptual math.
Oh dear.
You'll get us there.
Before we go.
We, sorry. We, in terms of the cost though, we, you know, we believe, you know, based on our conversation that, you know, this is a benefit to both Curry and to MPS. So we feel like it will be very fair in terms of what the costs will be.
I was going to say, I don't want to preempt the presentations. I wasn't sure if you were, don't remember your narrative part. I did want to get some feedback on the Tucker site visits. I was only able to make it to one and I'd love to hear some of the feedback or suggestions our families have shared and which ones we think we might, either there's a plan to act on or might consider. And if it's not something for this meeting, maybe in January.
Which site visits are you referring to?
When.
Community car.
Okay, okay. Dr. Carter. Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't think that there's, it's not anywhere underneath here.
Oh, because he shared the update, that's where I.
Yeah.
So you mentioned that you will free up six classes?
Yeah.
Do you know how we are going to use these classrooms?
That they're going over tomorrow. Danielle and Bernadette are going over tomorrow to walk around and take a look at the classrooms and see, you know, there's one, you know, if this was the building, it's kind of shaped like this table. And there's a load-bearing wall right down the middle. But there are other walls, you know, along that separate the classrooms that could be moved. There's a knee wall that potentially could be moved. So there are things that we could shift or change based on what our needs are. So they're going to be going tomorrow to just kind of start to think about, look at the space with a little bit more, you know, thought around our current students. You know, some are sub-separate, some are integrated. So looking at the needs of those different classrooms and then figuring out, you know, is it six classrooms? Is it five? Is it seven? Because you could, you know, in terms of like the requirement square footage, some of these classrooms have a specific square foot requirement. They had different requirements because they had, they actually had like toddlers and...
Nursery. My daughter was there.
Oh, did they have a nursery?
Yeah, nursery. They have infants and cribs.
Okay. Oh, so that's how you know about it?
Yeah.
Okay. I was wondering how you knew about it. Okay. So those requirements, obviously you need more space. And so it's possible that it's bigger than we think.
So I, we'll come back to your question. Does anyone have any other questions about the Curry College preschool opportunity? Anna, do you have any questions?
I'll watch for Anna if she raises her hand.
Okay, thanks. So skipping back to what you had raised, so I don't, Garth, are you able to share anymore? Or is that something that we want to talk about?
In January?
In, at a future date when there might be more detail about what's planned for coming up?
Dr. Carter put a bulleted overview in the Friday flyer, but I can expand on that for the next meeting if you like.
Okay. I did notice in that Friday flyer, I noticed a couple of specific things that seemed to respond to questions that had been raised that morning. So that was good in terms of, it shared the Tucker Site Council presentation link to the recording of the meeting that had come up was a question some people had, how do we access that? That was shared. It provided more information of the app, the distinct, the difference between the opportunities of community, middle and community schools, after-school enrichment and the after-school club opportunities that are coming up, which are not part of middle and community schools, but it'll be great, you know, in January when we can get a little more information just as we understand how that's kind of unfolding and hopefully in a positive way with the arrangement that's, that's there.
Could y'all forward the, the update from Dr. Carter?
Did we, sorry?
Could you forward it to us? I assume y'all got it as parents.
Yeah, sure.
Interested to see that?
Yep. Any other questions for Peter about any of the other updates?
Since Mark raised this question, would it be possible to include the principals' updates as a link in your superintendent email?
Yeah, or we could put you on, I mean, Stephanie could probably put you on a list too, if you wanted.
No, I'm just thinking about the parents in the neighborhood, in the whole community. For people who are curious about what happened in our other school that their kids do, does not attend, it would be probably fear for them.
Those may already be on the different school websites, are they? Yeah, yeah.
So instead of clicking so many websites?
I was trying to find it on our school website, over one and can't. Honestly, can't even find the school websites.
We are working on a new website. Mentioned that?
We'll hear more from your priorities report.
That might make it in there. I actually met with Stephanie this morning and the team has winnowed it down to three different, three or four different companies. And we're going to be, I'm joining them for the second round. We're going to be having an hour-long presentation from each company in January and moving forward. Also thinking about this in terms of, you just wanted me to keep talking, don't you?
It worked hard.
Also looking at integrating with communication as opposed to the websites here and Blackboard School Messenger, whatever you use over here, like trying to think about this more as a kind of communication hub. And apparently a couple of them lean more in that direction than a few others. So I'm excited to be part of that.
Yeah, if you want to swing by.
Okay, so I know we have the Colicott Site Council, very exciting, but we also have the field trip. Dr. Fisher, are you here for the field trip vote? I mean, does it make sense to switch the order? Is that something, would Holly know, is that okay with you?
I'd be worried that he's missing the Colicott presentation though.
A short commute.
All right. Let's just, if it's okay with our Colicott colleagues, if we could maybe jump to the Pierce Middle School trip, since that should hopefully be a pretty quick conversation, then we don't have to try to value everybody's time and control over their time here. You're most welcome to stay for the Colicott Site Council. All right. So we have this request document here. Do you want to tell us anything?
Field of the general overview, yes. So the...
We can just ask questions?
We were very excited last year to bring back the eighth grade class trip to Washington, DC. That was late last May. The request before the committee is nearly identical to last year's request in which students would depart Pierce, or depart Boston, Wednesday, May 22nd. From Logan Airport, fly into DC. We would be there all day Wednesday, Thursday, return back to Boston Friday night. The logistics are covered comprehensively through the travel binder that we've worked with for the past couple of years. And having traveled myself last year with a group, it was an incredible experience for 271 eighth graders, many for whom it was the first time either on a plane or away from their family. So lots of different experiences in addition to the educational components. A few years ago, I think it was four years ago, I came and made this request and at that time it was to shift from taking buses as the mode of transportation to flying, which obviously came with an additional cost, but what we've learned, especially from the people who had traveled in both ways, that students and teachers picked up anywhere from 15 to 18 additional hours being in the city simply by not being on a school bus for 11 or 12 hours each way. So, and the cost was negligibly different, given what the additional time that was spent in the city for, it was just about $200 more. So we have to note that the cost for transportation and lodging is high, no matter whether we're traveling for work or for fun. The cost is $1,289, which is up from 1,200 from the eighth grade trip last year. We have put a system into place to, you know, our goal is that every student who wishes to attend can do so regardless of their ability to pay. Last year through the work of our PTO and also working with Nish's classroom at vendor, we were able to fully fund every scholarship request, which was in the neighborhood of $22,000. So that was, you know, we have, similarly we'll have our work cut out for us again this year, but our commitment is to get, to ensure that, you know, every student, every family who needs assistance will get some, if not all, of the assistance that they've requested so that their students can have the opportunity to travel with their class and have this wonderful experience.
I think the students loved the trip. I saw the pictures with Ayanna Presley. I got the text messages from the moms who were very happy. My only request is that you do it for the 10th graders that missed the trip, who are now asking me, why didn't they get to go?
I had one of those in my house too, Beverly.
I guess you'll be leading it. Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
And some requests, they come to me and I carefully direct them.
I do have a high school social studies teacher that said he'd be willing to do it with you. I'm not kidding. But anyways, I would love to see.
I mean, for what, I don't want to put any on anybody else, but the trip and working with a vendor like this, it is, when you think about the logistics to go and traveling with 270 plus 13 and 14-year-olds and 30 or so staff, it was, you know, our job once we got those really to supervise the students, to make sure that they were safe and where they were supposed to be and to, and just to enjoy the experience with them. So it is highly rated as far as I'm concerned and highly recommended.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Did you have a great trip?
Yeah.
Exciting.
Thank you.
Please continue to do the trip so that our kids are old enough to know you're still doing it.
I learned that it is a rite of passage to travel to Washington, DC in eighth grade. And as we were there for those days, it was from the National Mall to every Smithsonian inundated with eighth graders. From across the eastern United States, which is cool.
It's a character-building experience.
All right, well, thanks for the presentation and for putting this together. So I'll make a motion to approve the Pierce Middle School field trip to Washington, DC, May 22nd to May 24th, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We can do roll call.
Oh, yep, sorry. Rule call, um, vote. Member Vargis? Member Lori?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Dr. Bernadette?
Yes.
Number two? Okay. That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
How many school committee members do you need to go on the trip?
Bev, you missed it.
I really did and I wasn't kidding. I like hit up this poor high school teacher on the parent information day and I said, hey, by the way. He actually said yes.
Crack some nuts.
This was a wonderful trip.
Happy holidays.
Yeah.
God bless you, bring a big group.
I've talked about, the 10th grade class really did. The seniors asked. So this is a rolling ask, but let's start with test.
So, Colicott. Okay, thank you for your patience.
Our pleasure. I actually offered to Bill, but we weren't in charge of the agenda, so I'm thrilled to watch that be approved. Thanks for having us. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Thank you for coming this week. December 20th, not much going on right now. But thanks for having us. So Ellen and I decided that we would come just the two of us, based on the time of year and efficiency. We have an amazing team behind us who helped build the presentation and also who helped shape our goals. So we will speak on their behalf tonight. Many of them are parents of younger children and it just felt like the right thing to do to just have the two of us here tonight. So thank you. So thank you. I do want to recognize that our school site members are representative of primary teachers, intermediate teachers, special education teachers, French and English teachers, and then parents of lower and upper elementary. So we are very well rounded and we of course have a wonderful community representative, Margot Chansey, who is a retired teacher from Governor's Road and just keeps on coming and offering some really nice additions to our agendas and also a really nice perspective. So we're very grateful and we're very grateful for a very strong PTO who is always in attendance at our school site council in our DEIB meeting. So just wanted to recognize that this is a team effort, although there are just two of us here. We did want to share that at Collicott, we have a commitment to academic excellence. We have very high standards for ourselves, for our teachers and for our students. We have an extremely dedicated and creative staff. They're committed to maximizing individual potential of each child. And we have a wide variety of challenging activities and experiences and we strive to provide the strongest academic foundation and love for learning in a secure, safe and stimulating environment that of course values individual differences. So we are the Collicott Cardinals. We are a mascot that we both inherited, but we embrace the Cardinal and Cardinals ball shaped sizes and we are inundated with Cardinals right now. It's a good season for the Cardinal. We have a motto this year and it's following the motto that we had last year. Last year we said it was going to be the best year ever and we believe that happened and our data speaks to that. But this year we're going with even better than last year. So that's where we are and we try to channel that each and every day.
You could use that every year.
So Collicott by the numbers were pretty consistent with our enrollment. Last year I believe we were, we were 585 or 583, we were one off. But this just in, we have two new students enrolling this week, so that number will jump up. So we are pretty packed. Our classes are not max, but very close to it and we're making the most of every single bit of space. It's exciting to hear about the preschool opportunities. We share very nicely with Cunningham. We actually have a Cunningham classroom in our building on the third floor this year. And we love having them, they're good neighbors, but it must be hard to be one of the only Cunningham classrooms on our third floor. So when I hear about Curry, this is a conversation we've been having for years. So the fact that it could potentially come to fruition impacts every single school. And I can tell you what we'll do with that space now or later or. So our enrollment is definitely consistent and we're very, very lucky to run a school with an amazing staff in a very committed, open and willing community. So at the Collicott, you know, when we think about what makes the Cardinals so special, there are so many things and there's a link here that we can open or you can open at your free time, but we did a padlet in our DEIB meeting and also in our school site council meeting and we asked, we asked our committees what makes us so special. And what was very overwhelming in the remarks was it's our staff and also our commitment to inclusion. At Collicott, we have three classrooms that house students who have significant need around special education. These are students who historically have been sent to maybe the New England Center for Children and Self Borrow, very costly program, very costly transportation. And now we're able to house 21 students in our school with their neighborhood friends. They are having art, music, phys ed, snack and some academics with their grade level classmates. And that is definitely what makes our school special. Collicott is the only school who houses this program. Every school has something unique about it and this is definitely unique to us. I also want to thank and commend our art, phys ed and music staff who we now own fully. Thank you for approving that. Now that we have our own art, music and phys ed staff, we are able to offer adaptive classes. So students not only are included when they can, they also have an adaptive art PE and music class. So the, it's amazing to see what's happening and we have videos of the collaboration that I'd love to share with you at another time. But what else is happening is that because children have the adaptive experience, they are more prepared to participate in with the Gen Ed classrooms. So it's, the number of benefits from this model are too much to mention, but it's definitely what makes us special. I also want to commend the staff at Collicott. We have a great balance of veteran teachers and new teachers and the collaboration among the teams is magnificent. We don't have any teacher who knows it all. In fact, some of our most veteran teachers are the first to take a class or to mentor someone else or to, instead of just participating in common planning once a week, they have lunch together every single day. So naturally they're having common planning every single day. So the commitment to the staff is definitely what makes us special. And I want to thank them.
What are the ages of students in the next program?
Ranging from ages five to 12. So we have a primary class, kindergarten grade one, we have another class grades two and three, and then another class four and five. And this is the first year that we have been able to start as close to fully staffed as possible. And I want to thank Ellen for the commitment to a lot of time this summer. This was our summer was hiring for this program and it was the best time we spent because we have the best staff we've ever had. And these are paraprofessionals who are pursuing special ed certification, BCBAs, speech pathologists, regular education teacher, adjustment counselor, you name it, they're in programs. And we have a lot of our pairs partnered up with Curry College and we're figuring out how to support them becoming certified as they work. And we know that's important. There aren't many people who can take a year off of work to become certified. So we're doing our best to help several staff members figure that out. So that's just some of what makes us special.
And although we are having even better than the best year ever, there is always room for improvement. So at this time we'll transition to talking about our three goals that we hope you'll see a mirror and connections to our strategic plan as a district. So we have one goal focusing on academic and social emotional growth, mastery through personalized learning, and then engagements of students, families, staff and community with a focus on equity. So these three goals, we'll just go through them one by one. So for our first goal, our Collicott staff will work to provide high quality instruction, targeted intervention and innovative school programming to support social emotional growth in all students. Much of this is consistent with Holly already shared about what makes our school special, but extremely our adaptive art, music and physical education have been something that I think has changed the culture of the school this year. Not only has it been transformative for students, it's been transformative for teachers and we've been really taking time to share that. For the end of Native American Heritage Month, our art teacher partnered with our music teacher to put together a beautiful song with artwork that accompanied it and we shared it in our morning announcements and the entire school was buzzing about it. So it was incredible to see children of all abilities, see themselves as artists, musicians and have that connection to social studies and our culture. Our positive behavior intervention systems is something that we really take seriously here at the Collicott School. Sometimes people ask us, oh, why do kids go to the office? Nine times out of 10 students come to the office if they didn't forget their water bottle. It's because they are getting a Cardinal compliment. So those are tickets that teachers and any staff member can give out that recognizes students for being respectful, responsible or hardworking. They get tickets and they can go to the office, put them in the envelope. We make a big deal of them. And then on Fridays, we do our Cardinal of the Week Assembly, I'm sorry, certificates where we pick out from those envelopes, one student per grade level per week. We say their name on the morning announcements. They come down, they get their certificate. We also, in Holly's weekly newsletters, we also publish all of this information to families. So everyone's buzzing in town about who is the Cardinal of the Week. So we really do feel that this time spent on Second Step, our Cardinal of the Week, our Cardinal Connection Tickets, as well as our assemblies, really cuts down on the negative behaviors. It's so rare for us to have to have a disciplinary type conversation with a student and their family because we look for the good and when you look for the good, most times you do find it. So we take time each month to focus on common themes from Second Step through assemblies as well. On the previous slide with pictures, you might have seen a student with a dog. That's our therapy dog Gracie who comes. Sorry, coming soon, I didn't mean to spoil it, but we have Gracie coming. Sorry, we have Gracie coming. She is our therapy dog who visits. Her owner is our speech and language pathologist mother, who is also Holly's kindergarten teacher.
Yes. That blew my mind.
And she comes with Gracie just about once a month and it's a therapy dog and we have experiences for our students, most notably in our partner classrooms, who really enjoy talking with Gracie. Some students who are reluctant readers love to read to Gracie. So it's a really positive program that we have. We have timely and consistent communication from administrators as well as teaching staff using this more platform. We communicate every Sunday with both staff and with families and all of those are posted on our website. So if you lose it in your inbox or you're moving to town and you want to see what we're all about, you can find all of those linked on our websites. Our morning announcements continue with our SEL themes. In the month of December, we've had great updates from our students who celebrate all different winter holidays and they'll come on the morning announcements, which we do as a pre-recorded video. So that way students can access the morning announcements whenever works for them. Many of, to get all of our specialist classes in, we start right at 8:30. So we like to have the morning announcements ready. So if students don't have time to watch it before their special, they can do it later. We announce, we have different themes every month and this month we've really been focusing on winter holidays. So we've heard a lot about Hanukkah, we're focusing on Kwanzaa and we had a student highlight Christmas this week as well. So more to come. Our Collicott after school sessions, our CAS program continues to be very, very successful. We have different opportunities for students for everything from pearler beads to math to arts and crafts. We have kindness club, you name it, we have a CAS class about it that is done. Ms. Barker, our administrative assistant, is the director of that program. She does a really nice job making sure enrollment is smooth for everybody and it's a really equitable process. Beyond the Bell will happen closer to our MCAS testing and many students from Collicott participated in the Beyond the Bell enrichment and intervention program over the summer here at Milton High School. That program was a great success. Our grade five student council continues to run strong. That's a group that meets every other week with myself and our adjustment counselor, Mrs. McGrath. And we work on improving the school and different ideas for assemblies and things like that. It's a really great group. We have a grade four model for sharing students. We're going to talk a little bit at the end about our grade five model, but grade four decided they wanted to departmentalize within the English Innovation Pathway Program. In the French immersion program, we've always had departmentalization in grade four when we go to the 50/50 split between French and English. And the grade four English counterparts wanted to get involved with the fund. So they have been partnering with Kristy Chapetta, our science curriculum coordinator, as well as Kim Kaplan, departmentalized for our social studies and science. That's been a great experience for students to all the students in fourth grade have two different teachers for academic subjects and the teachers have really enjoyed it. It allows for targeted time on learning that's scheduled in. Social studies and science have a great focus in grade four. So we're really excited to see how this will continue to affect our data, to have this designated time on task. We have inclusion and reverse inclusion. Holly described our programs and we have students who will visit the classroom of our substantially separate students to play games, learn a little bit about how their schedule works. And we have a great deal of inclusion of students from our programs visiting our general education classrooms, which is something we really pride ourselves on. More and more, we're finding students by grade five are graduating from our programs because they've had so much early intervention. And by the time they get to fourth and fifth grade, they might be spending the majority of their time in the general education classroom with the support of a special educator as well as an educational assistant. So this really helps us to always be striving for the least restrictive environment for students. In grade five, all students are invited to apply for jobs at the Collicott School. So we put our fifth graders to work, helping with absolutely everything from bus duty, assisting our custodians, organizing in the library, helping in grade one and two classes, helping in kindergarten. And this has been an awesome self-esteem boost for students in grade five. They look forward to their jobs. We've made them work badges, just like the ones we wear and they wear them on the day that they do their job and they really take it seriously and it's something that's brought a lot of joy to students of all grade levels. And Holly will touch on this later, but something else we're focusing on is this great work can only happen when students are here. So we're working on decreasing chronic absenteeism as an administrative goal at Collicott. And so you can kind of see, you might wonder, a lot of that might seem very open, but some of the ways that we monitor this are through observations. Holly and I strive to be in and out of classrooms all the time. So we see how children are doing, both socially, emotionally and academically. Classroom check-ins, adjustment counseling. Our adjustment counselor, Allison McGrath, is such a presence in our school that nobody feels like there's any sort of stigma from seeing the counselor. If anything, too many people want to see her and she doesn't have enough minutes in the day. She does fantastic work as well as whole group lessons for all students. And we're also looking at our SEL and vocal data as well as a behavioral health team. The vocal data is the survey that comes after the MCAS that tells about school culture and climate. So these are just a couple of examples of things in action that we described in the middle. It steals the show as Gracie, our therapy dog. But we can also see our Cardinal ticket in the first picture and in the last one, our student Ryan, who's very proud to be Cardinal of the Week. So what we will do for our next steps to continue on this goal is continue with the monthly PBIS assemblies. We are going to have our PBIS school leads present at our staff meetings. Sometimes they need just a few minutes of the meeting, sometimes they have more to present. We are going to analyze our vocal and SEL assessment data at the behavioral health team and we will identify supports for students in need. We will continue to include our comm classroom routines. There was a great deal of professional development that went into comm classroom last year and it is still in place, but to continue to do that, increase opportunities for reverse inclusion and encourage families to interact and connect with staff and each other through PTO events. So for goal two, our Collicott students will demonstrate mastery of grade level expectations and beyond through personalized learning experience. So we will see as a result that students will engage in educational experiences that take into account the specific strengths, interests and needs of each student. So we will talk more about the science model at the end, but we gave you a little taste of departmentalizing in fourth grade for both science and social study with supportive curriculum leadership. We have increased support for STEM and the Project Lead the Way curriculum. This seemed like such a natural partnership and as the former science curriculum coordinator, I wonder why I didn't think of it years ago. Combining our technology teachers with science to really make sure that the project Lead the Way, the additional STEM curriculum in grades one through five is as successful as possible. We will continue with our Beyond the Bell program. So at Collicott, this can be a confusing program because there's a Summer of the Bell and a school year Beyond the Bell. But during the school year, we have opportunities before and after school where our very veteran teachers offer support for students that we are hoping to see additional growth in the classroom and as well on MCAS. And they offer sessions that are targeted for the needs of the students. So we have that. And then in the summer, we have the Beyond the Bell program as well, housed at the high school. We still offer our Before School Math League and we see students who come to that program before school and put in the effort. We do see a correlation between success on MCAS as well as in-class assessments and just a general confidence approaching math in the classroom. We continue with Continental Math League, which is our Math Meets, that's an enrichment piece. We have Art Curriculum Enrichment ACE, which is offered for grade five students. This week more than ever, we've seen a lot of meet the artists coming through. We're learning about a lot of great artists and that's a parent-led program. We have Collicott After School Sessions CAS. One thing we would like to highlight with the CAS is we have Homework Club, which we will offer to anyone who needs it for free. We will have a regular educator there as well as a special educator and that's a time for students who might need a little bit more support to come do their homework. And there's no fight about homework at home. The homework gets done and they get additional kind of like, a little bit of like almost a tutoring type opportunity, just extra help, something I didn't understand in class, gone over in a small group. And the students all help each other too, in addition to the teaching staff. So it's a really nice community, almost feels a little bit like a boys and girls club there. It's really special. We offer science fairs for K to two and three to five that will come this winter. We have an art show, which is typically a combined effort with Cunningham, which is always really special. In grade four, along with the other schools in the district, we have our Celebrating Our Differences Program led by Dr. Maureen Butler. We have field trips for all students in K to five. We have assemblies, not only our PBIS assemblies that we run, but we also have different enrichment and cultural opportunities through assemblies, which can be really powerful. And we've already told you a little bit about our grade five student council and our fifth grade jobs, but it just shows everything we do is so interconnected.
So how is progress monitored for goal two? We will continue with our district assessments, classroom assessments, of course the MCAS, observational data by the administrative staff, including our curriculum coordinators, who we feel very supported by on a regular basis. And then also regular data meetings with our interventionists. So again, I also want to recognize and thank the funding for a math interventionist and reading interventionist. That work is That work is making a huge difference, especially in our special education eligibility. We're seeing many less students qualify because they're getting regular ed interventions. So that is, in my opinion, some of the best money that the school committee has spent. And I would definitely advocate to continue to support or increase interventionists, for sure. Goal Two in action. Here we see some of our first graders who are working together on the project. This is a French classroom on the left. And then in the middle, we have a kindergarten classroom. And this picture was chosen to highlight the increased amount of volunteers we have at our school. So we have historically partnered with Milton Academy on a regular basis, visit once a week. But we're having more and more volunteers from Milton High School. And that has been really exceptional. I also want to recognize, under the leadership of Karen Cahill, the increased interest in, what is it?
The Day of Service.
The Day of Service, but also the future teachers.
Oh, the Future Teacher Club.
So we have several high school students coming to spend time, teach lessons. And last year, we had two interns, Ella Gunnan and Mallory Hughes. And they interned with us. And both of them are substitute teaching right now while they're home from college. So they know exactly what to do. And I feel like we're really starting to grow teachers right here at Milton High School. So that's exciting. And then also, just want to, you know, wanted to highlight my little buddy, Harry, there with his brand-new glasses, because he just looked so cute in his little, in his brand-new glasses, but also using technology to practice skills taught in the academic content areas. So moving forward, next steps for Goal Two would be including maximizing common planning time and staff meetings. We have an agenda that's too long for every bit of meeting that we have. So we really have to focus in on what happens during the school day with our teachers. And that means pretty clear and concise agenda items for our common planning time. We will continue to use data to drive instruction, including intervention and enrichment. And we will increase offerings for professional development for all school staff. As we think about next steps, I want to say that we brought you a lot of data today. The data, you've already seen it. And we are about to enter a new data cycle. So we hope to spend more time on talking about our goals than our data. But we're happy to answer any questions about that as well. So Goal Three would be that our staff will maximize opportunities to engage students, families, and community members with a focus on equity. We've appreciated working through both school site council and our DEIB meetings and hearing feedback from all parties on how to make things more equitable. And we have changed many of our processes, including registration for things like our CAS program, opportunities to take technology home. So we appreciate really thoughtful conversations with our teachers, with our students and families, but especially with our families during our special meetings and coffee. So the result is that students, families, and community members will feel more connected and have more opportunities to engage and to participate in school events. So we think about scheduling of our events. Some are in the morning, some are in the night, some are in person, some are on Zoom. We know that we get a lot of participation, more participation at our DEIB meetings when we offer them at night after dinner in a virtual setting. So we continue to do that. Our school site council continues to meet right after school. We know that's important. Otherwise, we lose teachers who have to get home. We are always looking and consulting with our PTO and education leaders on our PTO to plan assemblies. And everything that we do is communicated through our consistent newsletter on Sunday. We continue to offer daycare so that families can participate in PTO. And a big shout out to the Bergen family. They're of all ages in every school. And they're our babysitters now. And so we are able to have really fun meetings because the kids want to come because the Bergens are there. We'll continue to do boohoo yahoo breakfast. That's a time for people to celebrate or to cry, whatever it may be. And we know that we used to always do that for our kindergarten students. We realize we really need to do that for our Grade Five students as well. So we've started at the end of the year, a little boohoo yahoo breakfast before our moving on ceremony, where we invite middle school staff down to meet our Grade Five families. We'll continue to work with the CPAC. We just had a very successful coffee two Fridays ago. Danielle Wetmore joined us. And we had just a really relaxed opportunity for people to meet the special educators who work with their children. And it was great to see some parents reconnect. They didn't even realize that their children went to school together, but they had been friends since preschool. So that was an opportunity to meet in person. We'll continue, we'll continue to offer opportunities for families to come. And again, Ellen and I covered the office today. And we had the luxury of greeting so many families who were coming in to do a special craft or meet the artists. So we'll, or mystery reader, we had all of that today. So we'll continue those. We're also really excited about two opportunities to participate in February. One is our Digital Citizenship Day, which will be on February 16. That's a time for families to come in and teach a lesson that we write for you. It's all prepared. And then on February 7, it's a half-day, our World Read-Allow Day, where we invite many leaders in the community. We'd like to invite every school committee member and central office staff to come on and read. And also to continue to work with Milton High School and also with Milton Academy. I also want to say that we had students reach out to us from Ursuline, from Notre Dame, and from B.C. High, who also want to come and volunteer with us. So we do our best to offer opportunities. A lot of these students are looking for opportunities to volunteer after school, which we don't have control over. So we're hoping potentially to support the community schools in growing volunteer opportunities as well. So how is progress monitored? Again, observations. We look at the CAS classes we've offered and the participation. I will say, and I'm glad that you commended Ms. Barker, who's our administrative assistant. She's the administrator of this. We have, we had 400 children participate and children of all ability. So we are able to staff classes. We have many children who need a one-on-one aid. And we're able to do that. We did just increase the class a tiny bit, by $10, to make sure that we can make sure that we can staff all classes appropriately and that classes are run safely. And we are also able to offer scholarships for those who need it. So we'll continue to pay attention to attendance. And we're also going to be looking at a survey for families to sort of gauge the satisfaction, the curiosity, and the participation of our families. So we'll continue to do that. These two pictures here, the first one, this is a professional development that was just completed. These teachers worked with our art teacher, Laurel Bernini, who's also the high school swim coach, mother of five and one of the most amazing teachers I've ever seen in my life, and has time to do professional development after school. I don't know how. But all of these teachers took a printmaking class with Laurel, and it was exceptional. And the other, the other picture that we have, this is our CPAC meeting, which happened on a Friday. And that was our CPAC coffee. So you see our special education staff, service providers, families. And on Fridays, we wear our Collicott spirit wear. So that's what's happening there. So for next steps for this goal, we'll just continue to offer opportunities as many as we can, continue to analyze curriculum and pedagogy to reflect cultural competence. We'll continue to build and share diverse library collections. We'll continue to analyze schedules to maximize opportunities for students and staff to collaborate. So again, I did, we have a lot of data here. And I think that you've seen most of this data already. VIVU has done an exceptional job at compiling this data. So we have, you know, some things that we could easily celebrate. We were thrilled to be commended, one of 66 schools in the state as a school of recognition for our accountability level, which was one of the best that we've seen as leaders. So we were, we want to celebrate that. We also don't want to rest on that. A lot of pressure to keep that up. And we're going to do our best to do that. But we, we had exceptional MCAS data this year. And I think a lot of that has to go to the planning, the instruction, the support from our curriculum coordinators, the dedication of the teachers, and the hard work of our students. If you walk through our building, you will hear hard work all day long. And you will see thoughtful planning all day long, from 8:20 until 2:49. So I just wanted to say, we are really proud of it. But we still have a lot of work to do. And, and we know that. So we did share some data with you. One thing that I wanted to touch upon is, which led to my, my student learning goal this year around chronic absenteeism. So when you look at everything that goes into accountability, we did really well. We received four or three points for most pieces of our accountability data. Where I'm not satisfied is that we've lost points in our chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism means you've missed 10% of the school year. So 180 days of school, 18 days is chronically absent. That's a lot of school to miss. It's hard to encourage good attendance during a pandemic or during COVID or when children are sick. But we're at a point now where we feel, I feel, we need to remind people about the importance of attending school. We know that if you're sick, you should stay home. We know that if mental health is suffering and you need a day, that's okay. But 18 days is a lot to miss. So we're asking families to really consider planning of special activities, tournaments, things like that. We know all of these are exciting events. And I'm a parent who took my child, my children to Disney in November. And I, I had a hockey tournament here and there. And my children weren't chronically absent. You can do those things and not be chronically absent. So we're, we're doing, I'm doing my best to remind people weekly through our newsletter how to avoid being chronically absent. And one of the ways we're doing that is reminding people, you know, today is day 72. So seven absences is on track for chronically absent. Hopefully, that won't get to 18. But we're trying to warn people and remind them how important attendance is and get people there as much as possible. In my research, what I'm noticing is the children who have been chronically absent last year, were chronically absent every year before that as well. So we are paying attention during behavioral health meetings. The first Monday of every month, we look at attendance and we send home letters to children that we're specifically concerned about. So that's, we look at our data, it's great. That's where I feel like Collicott can improve. So we're, I'm focusing my student learning on, on that goal. So there's a lot of data. And we're happy to answer any questions about that. But what we hope to do is just sort of spotlight our fifth grade data specifically. Because last year, we went to school site council. We presented a model for fifth grade. We voted on it. Not everybody was happy with it. But we did it anyway. And we did see that it was a good decision based on academic achievement. So I think Ellen's going to talk to you a little bit about that.
And if you're following along on slides, it's slide 25 for our Grade Five data. So in company, it was interesting that after COVID, when we had a very interesting time with cohorts, interu cohort A, or you cohort B, we noticed that after that very wonky year of school, our science scores went up significantly. And we wondered, how could that happen? With decreased time at school and all of the barriers that COVID brought. But we still saw a lot of growth. So we simply talked to the teachers and said, what do you think went right here to have this considerable growth after a pandemic? And they said, having a dedicated group that they taught science to and having a little bit more time with the same students each and every day led to considerable growth in science and having a really strict schedule. We know when you schedule something in the elementary schedule, it happens. There's all sorts of things in the elementary schedule that can make things be hard to schedule, like assemblies or fire drills or just different things that can happen. But when you have a dedicated time that is set in stone to teach science, But when you have a dedicated time that is set in stone to teach science, time on task makes a difference. So we saw that with our grade five model, which district-wide is 70% of instruction takes place in English and 30% takes place in French for students in the French immersion program. We decided to departmentalize by having homerooms that were either French or English, and then departmentalized for science. We thought this was a great idea for a lot of reasons. One, it created a dedicated time on task to do science. Three times a week, they have science with a different class other than their homeroom. We thought it gave time to prepare for an academic subject and having more than one teacher. So in grade five, our students in the French immersion program have three different academic teachers for their subjects, and for our English innovation pathway, they have two teachers. So this really helps with those organizational prep skills that are really vital for middle school, keeping up with note-taking, keeping a notebook, keeping your materials organized, getting used to a different style of a teacher. And also, we felt with science, it is the most hands-on subject in our experiences. So it's a great time for collaboration, working in groups, things like that. So we thought that's a great subject to departmentalize between French and English because there's so much doing and they're so hands-on. And we actually, Nora Wilkins, who's on our site council, who actually is a science director, and Wellesley really was piggybacking that idea, like, yeah, science is where to do it, this is the way to do it. And as a result of having the departmentalized approach, our team in grade five really partnered with Kristi Chapetta, our science curriculum coordinator, K-8, to get everything in, to really structure the time well. There was such a team approach, they would work collaboratively to build all the slide shows, to pace out all the lessons. So if you walked into any of the classrooms on Monday, Tuesday, or Friday, starting at 11 o'clock, you would go in, and of course, every teacher has their own style and their own spin, but it was a very consistent message. So regardless of who your science teacher was, you were receiving the same content. And I think there was such an approach that this schedule was good for kids and it was good for teachers, that there's such a motivation that we have to show the community that the work that we've done works. And you can see too, in our slides here, that Collicott exceeded the district as well as the state in their numbers, and it was a considerable jump from last year. So it was really exciting. We were kind of waiting all summer for this news and crossing our fingers and hoping that everything we thought and everything that we were piloting was gonna pay off. I still remember Kristi Chapetta called us on a Friday, and we're like, we can go into the weekend feeling great because we just got really exciting news about our science. And this is a tribute to the team, this was a decision that started in school site council, it was discussed at our diversity meeting. And I think that last year we did it, and part of our learning process was that maybe the missing piece was communication. So some parents were surprised that maybe they could not have the teacher that they anticipated because the teachers were divided by pathways for homerooms. So this year, we got ahead of it, and last spring, we had a coffee for all of our current fourth grade families to describe the model in detail, so everyone knew what to expect. And this year, with having great data and having a really proactive approach with communication, we haven't really been hearing from families that they're upset about the model. I think everyone's been really complimentary about everything that grade five has to offer. And something that we did focus on is the students have science for grade five right before lunch, and we have all of the students sit in the cafeteria with their science classroom. So that way, that's an additional time for integration between the pathways. And when we assign students to things like bus duty and other jobs, we really try to partner kids from English with kids from French, because when they go to Pierce, we want them to have as many friendly faces in their classroom, build as many connections as possible to really feel like there isn't a separation between the pathways. And I think that we don't really feel that there is a separation because everything's so integrated between student council, science, lunch and recess, and things like that.
So I think Ellen did a great job at reviewing the next few slides, the grade five model pilot, and the benefits of that. I do want to share that I think a reason why some of the parents had been disappointed about the model is that we had stressed for many years that the integration of French and English students in grade five was so good for social emotional health. And now we were going back and saying, well, we're not going to do that anymore. So there was real concern, especially from families who have siblings who have gone through this. It really is magical to watch the French and English students come back together again for the first time since kindergarten. So it was important to us to find opportunities for students to have that integration. And at the end of our slideshow, we have a lot of pictures from grade five that show examples of when students are able to see each other. So I do believe that students are still able to reconnect with their French or English counterparts, and there are many opportunities to spend time together. So we did, at the end of the presentation, include, and thanks to the grade five team for giving these to us, just examples of collaboration. So I just want to go over to the next step slide, and we can go a few more. We talked about all of these slides. Ellen has a gift of summarizing. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, we shared with you our three goals, we shared, you know, we're happy with our data, but we still have work to do. But the big piece for us is that, you know, we're going to continue to use daily attendance and data from Power School. We're going to recognize people with good attendance, and we're going to support those who need to improve. The letters that we've been sending out haven't been well-received by a few families, but they have led to some of the most productive conversations I've had as an administrator, and it has forced me to connect with families that I haven't yet. So I appreciated that uncomfortable, awkward conversation, because I feel like great growth came from it. We will work to provide additional supports for chronically absent students, we're helping kids get to school when they need to. We'll continue to use those attendance reports, again, the first Monday of every month, as part of our behavioral health team to figure out how we can support students. Ellen and I will continue to use vector solutions, DESI focus indicators, and classroom look fours and insights collected from our visits, our classroom visits. Also, our visits to IEP meetings, special presentations. We'll establish an efficient and effective system for providing feedback. And we hope, we really want to do our best this year at following all evaluation timelines, logging classroom visits, and giving feedback as much as we possibly can. Our jobs are busy, as are yours, and no day is like the day before, and we have great plans that never match what happens. So we're really trying to remind each other of our responsibilities and get as much done in an efficient way as possible. So I'm appreciative of our team, but especially working with Ellen, our adjustment counselor, our team chair. We have an exceptional team, and we know that we're lucky, and that's why things are working at Collicott. So again, we gave you a lot of information. I don't want to bore you with information that you've already seen. We are about to get into a new data collection time in January, we'll have brand-new data for you at the end of January, and we'll make decisions based on that. So I guess, thanks for listening. We did our best to be efficient, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. It was terrific. Questions, comments, anything?
Doing great work. Thank you for taking the time to take everybody to the talk.
Thank you. And also, thank you for, I think, speaking to the attendance issue and how you're handling it, and I think noting that it is, it prompts difficult conversations, but good for you for sort of doing that targeted work and outreach to families to get ahead of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Firstly, completely agree with Selena, like, all the points you made, like, attendance is a statewide issue, right? The commissioner has sent out communications on the importance of addressing chronic absenteeism with families, things like that. I think we've talked about it in some of these past meetings, trying to, how do we focus on that communication with families, kind of district-wide, town-wide, given we are still not back where we were pre-pandemic, and how we can help kids improve if they're not at the building in front of us. So do we have, I know you said you're working on chronic absenteeism, do we have current rates of like, how many kids are currently on track to be chronically absent this year versus last year, both at Collicott, but also kind of district-wide?
So this is going to be alarming, but it's settling. Our first month, we sent out 45 letters. So that was five absences. So at the time, five was en route to being chronically absent because we were around 50 days of school. We're now at 70 days of school, so seven is on the way to being chronically absent. We know that if you've had strep throat or COVID, five days is not unreasonable. It's very reasonable. And you may be sick again, you may hit 10, you may hit 12. The letters that we send just sort of say, hey, this is a reminder, you don't have to do anything, but this is, we're en route. So we sent out the first month 45 letters, and we send less and less every month because it's balancing out, and children have been sick. We have, you know, single digits of children who I think will end up chronically absent this year because we're actively working with families. But we do know that some will be chronically absent for reasons that we can't prevent, but we'll do our best to support the child at home and keep up on learning. What I've noticed, what we've noticed as a team, is that for many of our students who have been chronically absent for several years, there are students who have been referred to special education and are not qualified. So what does that tell you? There's not a learning disability, there's time lost on learning, there's a skills deficit, but not a need for specialized instruction. So that is something that is really hitting me hard. When we think about a pattern of chronic absenteeism resulting in a lack of skills that leads to a referral to special education, and the child does not qualify, that means it's a lack of time on task and not a learning disability. That's something that is definitely showing as a pattern in our data.
Yeah, I don't have the district data right now. I know it's something that we've talked about as a leadership team, and people are focused on it. You mentioned the commissioner has talked about it, and the last few months, the commissioner's communications have been squarely on attendance statewide as a huge issue. I mean, I think as we look at attendance, it's not simply like talking to families and helping them understand it's really important to attend school. Oftentimes, there are many things going on for families out of their control often. So it really kind of begs the question more, like, what are we doing in terms of family outreach, family engagement, networking and connecting with agencies that are supporting some of these families? That's the work. We do have to focus on attendance as a number, but we really have to be thinking about, you know, community wellness. That's kind of what impacts whether a student is attending, is on time, all of that.
We believe the majority of our challenging situations can be prevented. We have a few that it makes sense. There are other schools who have received higher credit for attendance than Collicott. So we have specific work to do. I can't really speak for the district, but I know I did take a peek at Collicott, Glover's data, and they received great attendance marks. So we have a little work to do. And I think coming off a pandemic and, you know, a real focus on mental health, it makes sense, but now it's time to get back to work, and we can support children in school if they're having a hard time getting there.
Yeah, completely agree with that. I mean, I think your point is right, and there's a lot of attendance work is individualized, and it's the relationship between teachers, school administrators, counselors to support families. You know, at the same time, the numbers are drastically above what they were back in 2019, right? Worldwide, it's 22% of kids were chronically absent, missing 18 days versus before it was 13%, right? And just looking at DESI profile, our numbers are 11% last year versus previously, they were under 5%. So they doubled. And I don't think, you know, there's, again, I think a lot of that is from my own experience in working with families and things, is like that the remnants of kind of the COVID, right? The keeping kids at home, like, being more protective, not thinking it's quite as a big deal, right? Just from our own messaging of like, keep them at home, it's fine, we'll excuse it. Like, that's a lot of work that within my own schools, we did a lot, and we're, that was, I think, the right messaging then. And now it's like, how do we pivot that back and change the behavioral patterns that we've kind of enforced over the last couple of years to get them back into the building as was like a prior expectation, because the rates are just so drastically different? So again, I just, I appreciate the highlight, I think it's something that we should continue to look at, because having essentially, you know, 10% of our families, or 10% of our kids across the district miss 18 days of school is really challenging, you know, if we're trying to get everybody to this place of academic excellence that we talk about and that we all want.
But it begs the question of the lost gap. Is there a way to ensure that students have access to the content without overburdening the teachers? I don't have an answer to that, but you can ask it around the room.
Again, our Beyond the Bell programming, our interventionists, they've been really, really helpful. And again, I don't think our attendance is bad as maybe others in the state, but it's of concern to us, and we're paying attention, and we're doing our best to support people. And again, if you're sick, please stay home. I think there's, there are some days that children could be in attendance where they haven't been in the past. But we're already seeing improvement, so I think just naming it has been a good move.
Your school provides so many awesome programs that I have never heard about, including the homework club that you said you was free of charge to all the students who wish to stay after school to do the homework, and also beyond the before-school math league. I don't think any other school had that in our district except Collicott.
I think Cunningham does. I'm not 100% sure, but math league is something that's been around for a long time, and it's typically been connected to our continental math league, which the district doesn't participate in as a district anymore. Collicott does. We have found through staff surveys and family surveys that people wanted to continue. And the continental math league is a 30-minute math meet five times a year for grades four and five, three times a year for grades two, three, four, and five. The way we've been able to sustain it is that it is an enrichment opportunity, and so during the time of the meet, we definitely make it a personalized opportunity. For some students who maybe are not on grade reading level, or who maybe are behind in math, we're not going to have them participate the same way someone else who might get full credit for the participation. They may do this work in a small group with a teacher and talk about it, so they still have the exposure, but they're not participating the same way someone who gets credit for the meet, and credit is, you get point zero to six, and then you get your name on the website. But really, it's an opportunity to engage in sophisticated math thinking, and what we notice is that by exposing all kids to this type of language, they're more willing to take risks at attempting problems. So continental math may be old school, maybe I'm getting old and I'm not ready to let it go, but I do think it has helped build a lot of mathematical confidence in children. And again, Collicott has an amazing parent group who runs math league before school. So there is definitely a connection between confidence and exposure. And so we, as a school, feel like it's a fun and important activity to continue. All schools are able to do it. Some schools have decided they didn't want to pursue it, they might be doing something else, but we are definitely continuing.
And is it open to all the children in the school, regardless of grade level?
So it starts in November for grades four and five, and then it's November, December, January, February, March, and then grades two and three, it starts in January. You really need some pretty good reading skills, so you, for grade two and three, you start later in the year. And we always share some of our old meets with families, they're pretty fun, actually. The teachers always do it, and they don't always get them right either, which is a great entry point for mathematical conversation. But for the families who participate in the before-school math league, we give answer keys, so there's no pressure there.
Do you see any correlation between students who participate in the before-school math league and their MCAT scores, or any datas that you collect at the end of the school year?
Definitely, there is a correlation between before-school math league and continental math. We also know that most of the children who attend our math league are high-performing mathematics students. We also see that some children who might not want to go, but their families make them go, end up liking it, because it becomes fun, and it becomes a chance to see different groups of friends and talk. And so the result of that is more of a willingness to attempt problems. So yes, I see a correlation.
You do, too. So out of all those amazing programs that you have at your school, how many of these programs are run by the staff, and how many are run by volunteers that you have mentioned, a volunteer from the high school, or the, or parents in your school? So how do you balance that?
So I think essentially, staff or administration is at the heart of the planning, but our family volunteers help us with before-school math league, it's completely family-run. Meet the Artist is an exceptional program written by art teachers at, from Milton, and it's an opportunity at Collicott for families to come in and teach lessons that our art teachers have written. I don't know that every school is able to get the same amount of participation that we are. Like I said, today, right before vacation, we have parents coming out of the woodwork.
I'm familiar with this, because I just did it today, too.
So you know that's happening at Cunningham. So again, our PTO helps establish signup geniuses and assist different teams and regulations to sign up. So there's a lot of facilitation there, but when Meet the Artist comes in, it's really a time for the teacher to support families engaging with students. Our CAS classes are all staff-run, our Beyond the Bell completely staffed, everything else is completely staffed. But our PTO is exceptional at organizing, and when we have our two opportunities coming up in February, AJ Melanson, our director of technology, has been great with organizing the lessons for Digital Citizenship Day, but we'll push out a signup genius for families to come in and sign up. So it's a little bit of a balance, but we have, we have an exceptional family league that supports us.
So I assume that the PTO funds the teacher who runs the program outside the school hours?
Sure, so it's all based through the tuition that the children pay. So when we have six children do a class, that funds the teacher. So for our CAS, it's never been meant to be a fundraiser, we just want to break even that we pay the teacher and we get the supplies that are needed. So if more than six kids join, that allows us to do scholarships for people who might need it because of financial implications, and it also allows us to fund one-to-one educational assistance to allow students from some of our programs who need support to attend, to attend. So we always like to get more than six students to join, so we have a little bit of a surplus to help with some of those other items, too.
Just to follow up, bow on some of your questions. I mean, it's so heartwarming to hear about all these wonderful opportunities that Collicott Cardinals have, and I know that many of them are kind of your unique spin on these district-wide opportunities, like Meet the Artist, for example. It also does make me think, though, about the work we can do as a district to make sure that some of these extra awesome opportunities are available to kids that happen to attend one of the other schools, too. For example, even like the therapy dog concept, I know that Mary Beth Lake at Tucker has worked over a few years to try, she doesn't have a former kindergarten teacher probably with the dog, but that's an awesome connection. But the point is, like, hopefully this is something you all can be discussing as a leadership team, to just think about where we see benefits to students, like, can we replicate that at the other schools? And that leads me to just really wanting to congratulate you all on the fifth grade pilot, because I do remember you sharing about that last year, that you had this thing you were working through how to try it out, and it's so exciting to see the results. And that is really like piquing my curiosity in just process, when there is an innovation like that that comes up that shows like such persuasive results. This is a rhetorical question, like, what's the process to take that innovation, bring it up to the like leadership team level, and think about what that could look like to pilot it at the other schools? I know the logistics of scheduling and staffing are very complicated, but I do just want to really offer kudos to you all for, like, trying something new based on a hunch, sort of, that was really grounded in your teachers' knowledge of their students. And like, that's really cool, and I just would love if that type of innovation can benefit outside of Collicott, too. Like, that would be a very cool expanded, like, impact of something that you all developed. And then, I lastly, just really wanted to highlight what I heard you talk about with the way you have planned your community meetings around feedback from parents and family members around what works, and offering a range of ways to engage that just makes a lot of sense, but, you know, I think probably is something that could happen more widely. So. Um, so that was really cool to hear about and thank you all for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two more questions. Um, sorry, brother. Uh, you mentioned reverse inclusion. I was Googling a little bit as you were talking, uh, and I can understand it a little bit from the context clues. Can you say more about, like, just what reverse inclusion is? And when do you think about utilizing reverse inclusion versus more traditional inclusion? Um, and obviously, like, what are the different goals of those kind of two, two models when you might use them?
So we always want, um, students to be included in the general ed classrooms as much as possible. Uh, we know some students are not ready to do that. So when you look at our three substantially separate classrooms, some of our students are included for morning meeting, for lunch, for snack, um, art, gym, music. Some are not included yet. They're not ready. As the year goes on, the goal is always to include as much as possible and it increases as the year goes on. Um, we have the luxury of housing three exceptional classrooms for students who are of exceptional ability. So getting our general ed children to go to their classrooms is important to us because, as Ellen said, they're learning about scheduling. They're learning about behaviors. They're interacting in an environment that is comfortable and safe for students who are, might not be ready to leave the classroom. So, um, one of the best examples, I think, of Maddox Nosek and Cole St. Ives. And, um, they give up one recess a week and they go play board games with students in grades two and three who, um, some are verbal, some are not. Some are scripting, some are not. Um, but the joy they have together is so fun to watch. So, uh, permission has to go out. This is an exceptional opportunity. So, um, we have to send permission slips home. Um, we have to make sure that families are okay with, um, Gen Ed students visiting the classroom. It's, you know, it's a confidentiality piece there that could be sensitive to some people. Um, but we communicate as much as possible. And what we notice is that more children have a chance for the reverse inclusion, the more comfortable they are with people who are different than them. A lot of times when you see children who are afraid to interact with a child who's nonverbal or uses a talking device, um, it's because they're afraid because they don't know what the right thing to do is. And the more time they spend together, the less afraid they are. So the reverse inclusion is just an opportunity for our kids from the Gen Ed classes to go to our substantially separate classrooms.
The last question I had was just the interventionists. And this is maybe not even just in Cali-Cott practice, but across the district. Like, when, you know, when do you identify? How do you identify students who receive kind of tier-two intervention sports through an interventionist versus just receiving those supports through individualized learning opportunities within the classroom from the, you know, traditional homeroom feature? Like, what is the, when do you make that distinction? How do you make that distinction?
So it's always such a fluid process. So at the beginning of the year, we use our DIBELS and our iReady data. And we work with district directors like Kater Roach for literacy and Brian Selig for math. And we try to come up with some numbers that feel as though, okay, if students are below this benchmark, they would benefit from working with the tier-two interventionists. We always share the list with teachers as well for feedback because sometimes we know, especially with students in the primary grades, sometimes data from the computer isn't as reliable as they're just getting used to the tools. For students in grades three, four, and five, they're used to using devices. They're used to these platforms. So we always look for teachers. And sometimes teachers will say, let's try them in the group. But I think after a week or so, they're not going to need it as much. So we primarily look at our district, um, assessments, like DIBELS and iReady to form the groups. We share them with teachers for feedback to make sure that we're on the mark here and somebody's computer didn't just die in the middle or something glitchy like that. And then we typically do about eight-week cycles. And then some students might be discharged from the intervention if the intervention did exactly what it needed to do. And another student might be invited to join the group after our January data. So it's very fluid. There are times where maybe a student, as time goes on, they realize they'd be a benefit for the group. And those are decisions that sometimes come out of our student support team meetings. So if we have a referral from a classroom teacher and there's a suspected area of weakness in math, sometimes our interventionist might just take a look at them as a second set of eyes. Um, and that doesn't necessarily mean they would join a group. It might just mean it's an observation. It might just mean they sit down and do a couple of tasks together. And the interventions might even have some suggestions for the teacher or vice versa. But they're very fluid, but they're based on data. We're about to get the new data in January. So we'll reassess, we'll sit with our interventionists, um, and we'll talk about patterns. And there's always an outlier who either, um, did exceptionally well by accident or exceptionally bad by accident. So we are always, it's always a fluid conversation, but the starting point is always district assessments.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your DESI designation. It makes us very proud to know that the work that you're doing is being reflected in your data. Well done.
Okay, this is very impressive.
My dad was impressed when he read it in the Globe. He broke the news to the district for me. Get a text from my dad, so it was kind of funny.
Everyone all set? Anna, do you have any questions? Thank you again.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Couple of our student reps have joined as well.
Yeah, so I've been communicating with our student representatives. Uh, they couldn't, they may have had an old Zoom link. So I sent them the Zoom link and those that are watching their email. Because one wrote, Sydney wrote, essentially didn't have it. And I'm sorry, I believe, I'm hoping that they all can get on. How many do we have?
Four. We have Sydney and Adam joining us.
Okay. So this agenda item will spotlight Val.
So we have a second meeting with, uh, high school representative, student representative. Um, uh, we met with the two, uh, teacher advisors and the four high school students, one from each grade level. Uh, we basically talked about the, what, what, what we could do together, um, as a productive group, uh, throughout the year because they are also very busy. And, um, so we share, um, some of the hot topics that we have been discussing at the school committee meeting, including the upcoming, um, school year calendar, um, the potential of adding, uh, holidays, um, into, uh, future school calendar. And we asked them to see if they can collect any data from their peers, um, or how, how, how are the ways that they can be able to collect, uh, datas, um, on any of the topics that we might be coming up. Um, so that's the main thing. And we would like to, um, so we invited them to come to today's meeting, um, via Zoom, so that we can introduce them to you all, um, and we can put a face to the name.
Sydney has joined us, Adam hasn't. Hasn't joined us, although we invited her.
Hi, I'm Sydney. I'm Sydney. I'm, I'm looking at her. I see you all.
Nice to see you.
Welcome, Sydney.
Thank you.
Did, did you say you're the junior rep?
Yeah, so I'm the representative of the junior class. And I know that some of the other representatives may have had, like, time constraints, but I can also represent them tonight.
Thanks for coming.
That's nice.
Why is it like that?
Does he have a virus?
Yeah, interesting.
And Adam, is Adam able to get on?
Uh, he declined the promotion for some reason.
Do you want to allow him just to talk without the video?
Try that.
Adam, are you there?
Hi, good evening. Sorry, I think I'm having some technical issues on my side. Uh, Adam, uh, I'm the freshman representative. Uh, and I'm looking forward to a great year, uh, and collaboration with the committee. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. We also have two more representative. Um, our senior is Julia Mangum. Um, and Elias Carlos is a sophomore. So Adam, Adam's last name is Chez, if I pronounced it right. I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong, Adam. And Sydney's last name is Burns. So Sydney Burns. So thank you both, uh, all for, thank you both for attending today. And thank you all four of you for, um, helping us, um, with, like, this collaborative work. And thank you, Dr. Burrell, for giving us the opportunity to meet in person now.
Yeah. And, and just to add a little bit to what, what you shared. So we, one of the things we talked about was those that have been part of this work for a long time, either, um, some of the students who have been, done this for a number of years, older, older students, um, and the advisors. We kind of just talked about how the interaction has happened. I shared a little bit about my experience working with student groups and school committees. And, um, everyone was really excited to, to think about this in a way that gets us away from the presenting on the prom and presenting on student events and really trying to make it more substantive and, and have them be part of, uh, you know, Val mentioned, the calendar conversation. That's a great place for students to come in and talk about, you know, what they think, what they feel, um, and, and I think both in live and, and deep in, uh, the school committee conversation. So they're, uh, it, it's for really strong students. They're really ready to lean in on, on whatever topics come here. Uh, and maybe i- in the next meeting, we can get them here in person, which would be great. How does that sound, Sydney and Adam?
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
That will be great. I'm interested in how we could maybe set up like a cadence of some kind. You know, it will also help thinking about our agendas in terms of how we, we have to plan the agendas, like, quite far in advance. So it will be great to know when we want to anticipate, including students in a discussion. For example, like, before we are needing to vote on something for the calendar that's actually coming up quickly. So I want to make sure we can, um, sort of like, take that idea and put it in play, um, at our next meeting. It would be great. Um, and then if we can figure out a way to kind of do that around the calendar discussion, which is in process, then that could maybe create a model for going forward. Or we can hear from the student reps, like, what would they prefer around? Like, how of, how often would they like to attend the meetings? Would they like set aside time to report to us or so on? So this is great. I'm excited, very excited that you've taken it to this point. Thank you. Thank you, Sydney and Adam, for being here tonight. Does anyone have any other questions or? Do you have questions for us, either of you? Okay. Excited to work with you and your colleagues.
And that is my report. Well, I will, I will mention, I got on the second page, it's not the first page, but, um, Kamala Harris got on the first page of the, uh, Elf in the Room. This is the high school newspaper.
Oh.
And you made page two. Congratulations.
I made page two. And they, the, the quote that they, she took out was, "I think that until every student's needs are being met, we're not done."
That's a good quote for you.
Did she write that for you? Did you say that?
In the summer. I say that.
You weren't planning on taking a winter break because there's work to do.
Exactly.
Why is it called?
I was going to say, wow, that was hard.
Why is it called The Elf in the Room?
What's that?
That's just the name of the new student newspaper. I have no idea.
I was just wondering if we knew why it was called The Elf in the Room.
It's the name of the new student newspaper. Yeah.
I know, it's just if there's.
The idea, I think the idea is they want to talk about things that people are reticent to talk about. So they're like the, the newspaper of truth.
I like the name. It's very catchy.
Yeah.
I forgot to ask them, Cali-Cott groups. Why, why, why is the Cali-Cott mascot a bird? Like, everyone else is a four-legged animal.
Well, the duck is.
Oh, Glover is a duck.
The Glover has the paw.
No one designed it, is why.
It's interesting.
They have all their, they got their Glover gear and there's a big white paw and a red sweatshirt, but they probably changed it.
Oh, it's changed recently, then, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Tucker changed from the, the tornadoes.
Yes, to the tigers.
To the tigers.
Yeah.
Tornado?
Because it was hard, like, a tornado was really hard to put on a shirt. Like, it's hard to depict a tornado. That's what I heard.
All right. Well, um, the chaired report is next. And this town meeting update is going to be very quick because, uh, we were all present at town meeting. And I think I'm just supposed to provide a quick update circling back on a couple of items that were sort of directly relevant to our work on school committee. Um, the first was, so for community members who may not have been following town meeting, um, school building committee. We will hear a report from school building committee in a little bit. But, um, one thing that, uh, did, did happen is town meeting approved the $400,000 allocation for the school building committee to continue its planning towards, um, the, the site, the architect, the architects, right? And maybe you can let us know more about that when we get to your report. But that was kind of one highlight of town meeting. And then, um, the second piece that, uh, we had discussed at school committee was, I believe, Article Six regarding recording of meetings, which of course we already record our, um, meetings, which not all the elected boards in town are doing at this time. But, um, that article was deferred to the annual town meeting in May or sent back for further study, rather. So it may or may not come back in May. Um, but that would, I think, uh, sit with the select board, is my understanding at this point. So that one didn't get a, a determination. Um, any questions? Pretty straightforward. Um, and I have a very short report tonight, but that's good because I know that under finance, we do have quite a bit to talk about with hearing around, about the budget. Um, and we have some vendor warrants. So that, I'll just hand it over to you for finance.
Do you want to go first? Do you want me to get the warrants out the way?
Either, what you choose.
All right. Warrants, quick, because you'll have all the time.
Excellent. Excellent.
All right. So.
Some motions.
That's right. Um, I would like a motion made for vendor warrant number twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and fifty-six, um, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, two hundred, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-three cents payable on December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
We got to do that.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Chu?
Yes.
Member Loring?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yeah. And I just want to say that for some reason, the video was out for open access. So I don't know if someone picked that one up, so I can't see that.
Oh, yes. It's an orange box.
Where?
Oh, can you see us now? Okay.
Yay. All right. And I'm a yay, so we're good. All right, next, vendor warrant number twenty-four in the amount of four hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-three cents payable on December twenty-first, twenty-three. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Loring?
Yes.
Number Chu?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes. We're good. Thank you. And with that, I turn it over to you.
Great. So we've had a number, and I think all of you have attended at least one of our subcommittee meetings, our finance subcommittee meetings. Uh, we today met, um, for the maybe fourth time and presented Level Service. We've presented the needs budget previously and felt like it was now time to bring that, bring both of those budgets forward to the, the full committee to, for, for conversation. We are moving towards, um, looking for action from the school committee in January on the budget. And feel like we're very close. Um, have had two really good joint meetings with the town. Uh, that's been very helpful in honing in together on, on what our needs are across all town departments. Glenn has put the presentations that you've seen, those two separate presentations together tonight for us to, um, kind of go through and, and hopefully get to some kind of final. tonight, for us to kind of go through and, and hopefully get to some kind of finalized place where, where we can warrant a vote for January 3rd, which is our next school committee meeting. So Glenn, if you want to bring up that presentation and, and kind of bring us through that, then move from there.
Since we've already started, you might as well call.
Pulling it up, so.
A wrapper of something red, and I was like, oh, so.
There's also the Montalheos.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, those are sugar cookies.
You should open them, probably.
Well, I'm so sorry, this was like something meant to be quiet, and it just.
Then you pass the cookies.
I know, right?
It's almost nine, so.
It's crunchy.
It's very good, and I forgot, we might as well go all the way.
You can't take mine anywhere.
Or still, no, with lettuce.
Give me a wave.
Wow, those are good.
Wow, how far go?
Their Christmas tree is under there.
Shall I talk while you eat?
We're taking a snack break.
Almost nine o'clock.
Very briefly, I have this superintendent said most of you have seen these, if not all, but it's a chance to talk about this sort of in public and on TV. First part of this is our level service budget, which we have talked about, that all staff have been in fiscal 25, we're not talking about any additional staff in this contractual obligations, and the rollover of all staff who are currently either funded by ARPA or ESER funds, which are being exhausted at the end of this year. So it's, from our perspective, this is the cost of doing exactly what we do now next Our current general fund budget is about $61.5 million, we are using about $1,001,001 in ARPA funds and ESER funds this year, so our current total budget is $62.7 million. To roll that forward into next year is $66.9 million, basically $67 million. That's an increase of about 6.8%, but because we have to absorb all the ARPA and ESER funds, it's actually an increase to the general fund of significantly, more than that, it's the extra million dollars in the, probably rolled up cost of the million dollars into the general fund, so it's an increase to the general fund of $5.4 million. This is a feature we will be seeing across town this year, because we are not the only department using ARPA funds, for instance, and if other departments wish to continue with services they are currently getting through these funding, this is a pattern you'll see, or the town administrator will certainly see from all the other departments as they roll forward. What drives that increase? I'm looking at the overall 6.8% increase of, of the budget, about $3 million is, is staff increases, 5.8%, about $1.3 million is non-salary costs. The $3 million in salary increase, we've talked about this before in the fact that although our enrollment hasn't necessarily dramatically risen in the last couple of years, the needs have changed. I've been quoting the fact several places, that five years ago, we had 600 students on IEPs, now we have 800. Five years ago, we had 70 students who are English language learners, now we have 120. These are numbers that are real, and as a result, what we're seeing in our staffing needs is not more second grade teachers or more kindergarten teachers, it's more specialists, more BCBAs, more educational assistance, more of this. So actually, a big factor in this is an increase in special education instructional assistance. We've, you know, when we built the budget in the fall of '22, we had 94.1 FTEs, this fall, we have 104. And I won't tell you that we won't have more by June, because needs change, and as needs change, we do, we deal with it. So that's a big piece of the, the budget increase this year, is that it basically the increase of educational assistance, and it's the final year of a, a contract where we were working to bring our educational assistance to a more living wage. Five years ago, the entry point was like $17, next year, it's gonna be 22. I mean, that's, that gives us the opportunity to get educational assistance. Most of the labor strife you see around the labor communities is trying to accomplish exactly this, which we've already done. So, I mean, it's a cost, but it's an important cost, it's a needed cost. All the other staff, once you back that one category of folks out, it's a four and a half percent increase, our steps and lanes traditionally run two to 2.2% of salary, just to handle people's increase on a step or as they get a, a additional degree moved across a lane on the schedule, and with a two and a half percent COLA, 4.5% is exactly where I would have expected it to be. So I, really, there are no surprises in the salaries, even though the number may look like a surprise. What about the, the rest of it, a 12% increase in non-salary increase? Well, again, of the 1.3 million, 100,000 in special education out of district tuitions, that's the, the now infamous 16% raise in private school tuitions that was approved by OSD last year. That's huge. We are waiting to see what this, there is a sort of a supplemental circuit breaker program that the state funded in the current budget, we don't have many details on it yet, we may be able to get some more, you know, certain amount, we should be getting some additional support for increases above seven and a half percent, but as of yet, it hasn't been fleshed out exactly what that is. We have a couple seminars coming in January that we'll look at, that may give us some relief on this, but it'd be one time, it's just for this year, to, to take care of the large hit. The other two, other pieces that are in here, our athletic budget has been dramatically underfunded for years, and we're just trying to make an effort to get it up to actually what more current spending is. So there's about $80,000 in there, and the school bus that's being added in January will need to be added for next year, so that's $90,000 above this current year's budget. Once you, once you take those three things out, it's a 2%, 2% increase in costs, which is, again, in this economic situation, not unreasonable for fixed costs. So even though the numbers look big, they are manageable and not, not unsurprising, not surprising. Beyond that, this, this is where we've talked in the past, and this is, again, one you've seen, just to quickly run through it, we were looking at what are the systemic initiatives, what do we need to do involving the multi-year plan, what steps can we take as sort of baby steps in year one to get us more towards sort of systemic reorganization that we're interested in looking at to see how we can streamline. Again, the drivers, looking at MTSS, looking at our multi-tiered system of supports, how to deal with the learning loss, social, emotional, the English language learners, now that we've cracked 100 ELL students, we need a director position, that's part of, there are various things that are required at certain benchmarks, when you're, number of ELL students, nursing supports, we've talked about that, that we're looking at, we have, you know, increasing numbers of medically compromised students, and the enrollment bubble in the elementary school has crept up into the middle and high school, that, you know, we've seen over the years, and it's led to unavailability of certain offerings, just for lack of staff. So on the MTSS level, we were looking at the addition of two reading interventionists, Holly spoke to the value of them early, but it really, that's, we really fund reading interventionists primarily grade three and below, we'd like to be able to do more in grade four and five. Two teachers would allow basically halftime, they'd be halftime at each of two schools, we get some more additional support in grades four and five. Adjustment counselors, this, I would say, is the single largest ask in the, in the needs based budget, is just to deal with all the issues that we're dealing with in the schools, on, you know, the social, emotional level. We have one adjustment counselor at each elementary school, one adjustment counselor for 450 to 600 kids, depending which school you're talking about, you know, the recommendation is one for every 250, we're way beyond that. And we need, we would look to add some at the middle school, some at the high school as well. We add a, we have two and a half at the middle school, we'd like to bring it up to three, we have three at the high school, we'd like to bring it up to four. So the minor adjustments there, more large adjustments, as I say, it's, the recommended is one for 250 students. In special education, we're looking at a lot of things in special education, but some, you know, sort of initial efficiencies we looked at, and I point out that both of these, we anticipate will actually be revenue neutral. Two administrative assistants who would help the team chairs take a lot of the scheduling and paperwork off their plates, and allow the team chairs to do more of the evals, revals and things like that, that we are currently having to contract out, because we just don't have the staff to do. And the same with a secondary level psychologist, to get more of the testing, for instance, being done in-house, less outside, and we are spending, you know, an enormous amount in contracted services in special education. We could, we, I know we're going to go over that budget this year, I mean, and part of it is because we have been unable to hire certain staff, so I mean, this is a, this is something we really have to bring under control, because this is the, the one area of the budget that we could, can really explode when you get into all the contracted services. ELL I mentioned, we need an ELL lead, we're looking at it as sort of a halftime director, halftime provider, we're not exactly sure what, you know, the details to be worked on and how exactly, whether that's a unit A or a unit B position or what, but we'll, you know, that's, the need is there, we'll have to figure out how best to, to satisfy the need, but that's a, a person we need there for our ELL. Again, along the lines of special ed, these are almost bills, you know, they're requirements that we have to handle, the children we have and the needs they have. We're looking at increasing the elementary librarian support, we currently have one librarian for 2,200 students, seems kind of awkward, that's a, it, it's hard to imagine that one librarian can, can do that. Nursing, again, currently, we have one, one school nurse at each building, we have a director of nursing, we have one ARPA-funded floating nurse, and two ARPA-funded part-time nurses who are two days a week each, we'd like to increase that to get the extra day, whether it's one of those two-day-a-week people become a three-day-a-week people, or whether the two jobs be combined into a full-time job or something, we'd like to get another day of nursing in there, just to, to bring that level up. There is no question that our director of nursing is constantly struggling, trying to figure out, there's a field trip tomorrow, who am I gonna send, because I have a medically challenged student on that field trip, you can't send the school nurse, you can't leave the school, the school empty. Nurse substitutes are unicorns, they're hard to find, it's just, it's very difficult. So we really want to, it's not a huge ask, but it's something we think we really need in terms of nursing, staffing agencies are also very expensive. Yeah. The, we talked about this previously as well, the middle school, the current eighth grade of 276 students is being supplanted by a much larger, entering sixth grade next year. At a 369, we usually, we've been averaging a loss of about 24 students from fifth to sixth grade to some private schools, but you're still looking at a significant increase in the size of the, in the population of the school. And current eighth grade teachers, because it's smaller, have been offering exploratory classes, as the seventh grade moves up, they're not gonna be able to do that with the enlarged sixth grade, we need two more teachers, really, to handle some of the exploratories in that, in the school. Again, whether that becomes this current sixth grade half team expanding to a full team, and they do some exploratories, or whether you hire teachers just to do exploratories, again, one way or the other, it needs to happen, we can always adapt the, the model to, you know, the best available folks and the best available model. So we're looking at two positions there. The high school, this is, with the last meeting, you asked about this, we, the high school principal had mentioned career tech and PE health were the two most oppressed departments. I got back with the, the high school principal, she gave me this list of career tech courses that were not offered, I mean, they had requests for courses that exceeded their capacity by 22 sections in the career tech department. So we did offer AP macro, we had enough requests for two, but we could only offer one. Financial accounting, same sort of thing, we offered some courses, but we have room, we had requests for one more. Computer technology was three sections oversubscribed, and so forth down the list here, and it's quite a lot, you know, culinary, five sections, I mean, you know, fashion, woodworking, all these various things that sort of fall into this, it's kind of an etc. department, it's sort of, I think, over time, we've combined departments to try to keep, to limit the number of department heads, and that's why you have culinary arts and woodwork and economics in the same department, but there, there are different staff. The woodworking teacher is not teaching microeconomics, I promise you, but it is a department that has, you know, has a lot of demand and not a lot of staff, and so the high school principal targets this as her largest need. The health and PE, where we have 30 sec, 13 of our sec, of our 30 sections are above 30 students, two are at 40, again, for students at a gym, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you get into the health class aspect of it, 40 students in a health class is like, I don't know how that works.
I do have a question, and it's funny, because this is truly my third time hearing this, I apologize. When I think about 22 sections and two FTEs, is the plan to have like point fives because of the variety of content, because otherwise, I would think you'd need more teachers?
But you're not gonna, yeah, I mean, you're not gonna.
The issue is.
My kids have been asked for these classes and have not gotten them, that's why I'm like, oh, that's right, get down with that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue is, you have all the students, if you fill those 22 sections, you have sections that are empty.
Yeah.
So then you're talking about riffing or, you know, making changes to staffing, so it's, it looks, when it says 22 sections.
Say that again.
What's that?
Can you say it again? I, I actually did not process the idea of that it's 22 sections or some that are empty.
Well, like, there are cert, so students request different, different sections, and so the requests, we, we have the, if we hired a number of teachers, we could, we could fill the need, but then other teachers that are hired that are teaching other courses would have no students in their classes.
These students are all in something else.
Something else, yeah.
Yeah, they're rolling in something else.
So, I mean, you might not have got AP macro, but maybe you're in a different course if there was.
In something else, not what they asked for, that's interesting.
Yes, yes, and there's a balance in, in a high school curriculum between an offerings of determining what the requirements are, you know, and like in anything, like in a business or in a school, like when there's more interest in a certain subject area, we tend to increase staffing there and decrease staffing in places that aren't, you know, filling as much, or, you know, when you have courses, for example, that only have five or six students in them for more than one year, not an anomaly, but, you know, those are things that, on an annual basis, that, you know, high school administration would look at and, and make determinations around what, if any, changes need to happen to staffing, to, to respond to that reality.
But it seems, is it fair to say that this request for two FTE in this area is still a conservative request, it will not come close to meeting the demand, it will just improve the situation and help more students get access to the first choice electives?
Yep, that's well said.
We also mentioned the, a couple administrative leaves, needs, trying to differentiate between curriculum instruction and human resources, human resources, you know, is a different skill set, doesn't need to be necessarily an assistant superintendent level skill set, it could be a director, it can be a manager skill set, free up the, free up the assistant superintendent to actually do curriculum, instead of dealing with the various different to actually do curriculum, instead of dealing with the various different HR pieces that are, are necessary. So we're looking at that, as we have more and more staff, HR becomes more and more a real full-time job. And our communications director is, you know, currently a half-time person, as we get more and more need for communicating and more and more venues to communicate in, it becomes less and less easy to deal that, and deal with that on a half-time basis. We really want to.
And it's not, yeah, and that position is not just sending communication out, it's engaging and bringing people in. And I think sometimes people think a communications director is sitting there like writing Facebook posts, sending out emails and blogs. That's a really small portion of what a communications director does.
And we've talked about the space needs, fourth floor cutting game, and you've heard earlier on today about potential with Curry College. So the cost estimates for this, the only variant in here is the EL director, whether it was unit A or unit B, there's a differentiation. But you're talking roughly the $1 to $1.1 million cost above the level service budget. Clearly, when you get into these kind of numbers, and I will say even with the level service numbers and the current situation with town revenue and requests from various different departments and absorbing ARPA and SIR all over the place, this is, you know, to fund this and to fund similar requests on the town is clearly an override-style budget. We'll have to see where that all plays out, and to where the select board goes, whether they want to just try to make it through this year, whether they want to build a contingent and non-contingent proposal. That will be playing out in January and early February, as we get better revenue estimates and we look at all those different things. But this is where we are right now in terms of what we think the, the rollover is, what we think the needs are. I would say this is, you know, at least 95% of the way to be the request. There may be a couple small tweaks you want to make between now and January 3rd while you're.
Well, I was going to mention, I was going to mention, we are, we did have a conversation this morning, for those that weren't present at the finance upcoming meeting, about our fees, and looking at all of the student fees that, from, you know, preschool through 12th grade, and are currently reviewing those to, with an eye, I think, towards equity and I, I think a system, I, I feel like sometimes, in the past, programs have started and absent a grant or something, there was conversation to, to fund some of it with fees, maybe it didn't include all of it. But if you look across all of our fees, there's not a real clear rationale in, in terms of like why we charge what we charge. And so we are reviewing that with, we're, we're bringing it next. We, we've done an initial pass to look at it, bring it to our principals next month. So I think we'll, on the 3rd, we'll have done a bit of work, we'll still have more conversation probably to go, but we'll be very close.
And then, of course, the other one is the, you know, as we continue the discussions with Curry, there will be lease payments, which we'll have to figure out what we, how we're going to deal with those. And even though we'll be bringing our staff over there and our students, you, it remains to be seen whether, for instance, it will be their custodial staff that takes care of the building, or will, will we need to supply someone. We will certainly want to bring over an administrative assistant, you know, for that We currently, I would say, don't have one to spare, so that's probably a new hire, to, you know, to be that administrative assistant there, or something like that. I mean, there will be some, some costs with opening a new building next fall. Again, since we don't have actual lease proposal yet, it's kind of hard to say what those are. You know, that's why I'm saying, you know, this is not 100% yet, because there are a few things still in the air that we'll have to deal with.
I appreciate the fact that you were all able to create a budget with the leadership team that reflects the needs that are known in the district, and giving ourselves the flexibility to address fees and address the possibility of a new school building. You know, the warrant committee's been an active member of this discussion, so the good thing is there's no surprises here. And the preliminary feedback from various stakeholders has been, our budget is reasonable. There aren't asks in here that someone could say. Don't reflect what are known needs, do not reflect research-based practices when we talk about ratios. So I think this is something that any one of us could share, whether it's at the warrant committee or town meeting, comfortably. And if we add the context of how this falls in our strategic plan, I think it gives people the full story of, this is the arc of the work. We started here, we told you these are focus areas, there's nothing here that conflicts with that. And I think we're just continuing the story that we've shared once the first strategic plan is launched. So thank you for taking the time to, to convene your leadership team and put together a budget that reflects what we know to be the known pain points and missing items.
Thank you. For your work as well.
Yeah, thank you.
For the leadership.
Please.
Not easy.
You did the work, yes, yes, thank you.
With your permission, I'll give this much that we have to the town administrator, he's in the process of trying to put together, you know, spreadsheets for the town and so forth, and we're getting his work together, with the understanding this isn't the final budget, but it gives him something to work with, gives him some numbers to put in to the spreadsheets, and I'll just share it with them unless there's objection.
No, I, I apologize that I actually missed this morning's meeting, but I'm wondering if there is a slide that we could add at the end, just that would actually add it all up, just for folks who very quickly want to look at it and understand what the level service budget would be, plus the systems-based number. I think it's just a simple summary at the end.
I mean, the spreadsheets I have backing this up, you know, this comes with 25 pages of spreadsheets, just because.
Yeah. The first page we.
I'm sorry, I can put the total number.
What's zero in as to what that final number is, I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's 5-2, right? It's 4-2 plus 1?
Well, again, it depends whether you're talking, to the general fund, it's more.
Yeah, right, right.
The general fund is 5.4 plus 1.1, but like 6.45, the general fund.
Right, right. It's like an increase, yeah.
Essentially, you're taking slide four and just adding a large, yeah, too large, whatever. Yeah.
Thank you.
Easily done.
Yeah. It's 5-2 or 6-4?
Sorry.
5-2 or 6-4?
Yeah.
That concludes our presentation.
Again, if the warrant has to close on January 17th, does that mean the town administrator has to present a draft budget by January 17th?
No, he has till the end of January to give it to the warrant committee. What it does mean is if there are any other articles, for instance, we won't need, we don't need one, but if we wanted a separate article for a Curry lease or something like this, that would have to be submitted by January 17th. That, to be fair, the select board does have the ability to open the warrant again and close it again at a later date. That is very adept at doing so. So it, it's not a drop-dead deadline, but it's, really, they want to know what's out there. As I say, that is a, is a possible avenue, it doesn't have to be that way. Again, Curry will just depend on what we see. That's, it's a little early, you have to figure out.
It's ready when it's ready, in all reality.
Yeah.
Because they have to, we're negotiating. It's in a tough spot.
But it could be something we have to build into our budget, it could be done as a separate, there, it could go in a number of ways. It's not, it's not a, it's not forced. And, you know, we could look at it as, oh, well, given where we are, we want to look at a one-time expense to get it started next year, and then build a budget the year after that. You know, there, there are various different ways to do it at this point, you know, depending on how it all shakes out. So we'll, it, it's early in the game.
Well, as, as a newbie, you can just kind of put me out front, be like, Peter just doesn't.
Well, this is something similar that happened last year when the, this, the building came up at Van Bonn. It was a random time of year, and everybody figured out, so that I had nothing to do with it. Everybody figured it out, so I'm optimistic that the fact that Curry has that space available and it's already prepared for an early childhood setting, that's, that's really good.
Yep.
Well, since you are, you're going to have the conversation with Curry College, they also have a school of nursing, so. Maybe you can recruit from them.
You're right.
And there's also another college of nursing right next to Van Bonn.
Yeah.
Laverre.
Laverre.
Yeah. So there, there are some resources available, but just like, how to attract.
Internships.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, internship, we have to, internships are one thing, but you actually need licensed nurses.
Well, any other last questions, knowing we'll come back to this in two weeks? Okay, thanks again. I really appreciate how you're framing the needs-based budget as the actual needs, the reason for the needs. I feel like we may have not done that as clearly in years past, and there's been a more gray area between like nice-to-haves and needs-to-haves. And these are needs, like actual needs.
We called it down instead of bringing a wish list, basically.
Yeah, right. But even things that have come up in the past, that have not been funded in the past necessarily, but now being able to frame it as like, this is the reason why we need this, and it's a, it's, feels tangible, so hopefully that will be compelling to people outside of this room as well. Any, let's see, the next piece is policy. Anna?
Yes, okay. Since it's getting close to 9:30, I will be quick. The central office team, but they're part of the number one, like, all orders and policies, action, my section, and post-arrangement plan, which will be in the desk, and then bucket them into what categories had been advised to be and start, which kind of prioritizes what they should look at. A few things we discussed in our last policy meeting was that all of some of these reviews might be simple and others are complex and take more time. The goal is to have recommendations and batches of 10 or so for us to review at our meetings, so get ready for a lot of reading coming here. And then some policies follow other policies and some following procedures. We would link policies, link the procedure to the type of policies and make them stronger, and some may be policies and procedures. Some of them may be policies are also procedures, so we can kind of put them into two sections. So these would eventually, eventually be on our resume, and they would be organized and kind of make them back and forth. And then in terms of process, we decided that, after much discussion, that would make more sense, most sense, start with adding the weight categories with two more sections. And then, of course, lastly, if there are required as new policies, then we still have to need to have our compliance, we would need expedite approval of those, so then might be just a single reading where we do have to vote within that reading, it's just happening second. That's it?
Thank you. Questions? Yeah, so, get ready, it's going to be exciting in the new year of policy. Peter and Glenn, thanks for all the work you're doing on that. It's a lot, it's so time-consuming.
It's a lot, but it's, it's needed.
It's going to be good. Thank you, Anna. All right, school building committee?
It's my, it's my turn. A school building committee met on this past Monday, we discussed a few things. We talked about project timelines, so again, currently we have OPM on board, they're now kind of helping to run needs meetings, which is great, very helpful, especially for Sean. We are within the process of the RFP to select a, an architect for the project, so we have that written that is going out, and we've talked about the process of kind of timeline of when will be posted, when they will do walkthroughs. Actually, we already did the walkthroughs last week with some architects. We talked about, we've had lots of interest, about 40 different groups have pulled the RFP at this point, doesn't mean all 40 will submit a proposal, but it's great that it's getting kind of that many eyes on it. And so, you know, early in January is when the, the deadline will be, probably, I think, second or third week in January, and then after that, talked about just the timeline of the subcommittee of members of the school building committee, as well as members of the school district itself, and town reps will kind of meet, as we did with the OPM, to kind of take all the proposals, whittle it down to a finalist list of three, bring that back to the school building committee, and the school building committee will then select the architect, kind of through that process. So we're very much near what we did with the, the OPM, and the hope is that we, we have that done kind of early, middle, sometime in February is essentially when we will have an architect selected. So that was kind of the timeline we looked at, and then talked about the funding article that was passed, and again, you know, incorporated the money that we have allocated kind of within the RFP and update the information we're providing to architects, so they're really clear on what we have to offer, so that in their proposal, they can be clear on what they're offering us, and able to get done for that amount of money. Certainly, it's our hope that that, with our existing funds and the new $400,000, that that will take us through kind of what we need as relates to kind of a schematic design-slash-feasibility proposal that is, is good enough to give us a really good sense of what the project is, what its costs are, cost estimates, and present that to the town, you know, with, I think, the initial idea of that being next fall or next November, as we've discussed previously. But, you know, we'll, we'll certainly see, but as we have conversations with architects of what their proposals are, and if that's, you know, enough to get us there, or if we need to by January 17th submit another warrant article, a little bit more to get us to the finish line, but that's certainly not, our, our hope is that we have, we have what we need and we'll get a good architect come forward. The next thing we talked about was the land swap. We actually had a visit from Timbulte, who came and provided us some update on that process, and essentially, his office is waiting on us to submit some finalized paperwork as it relates to the land swap, to submit that and get the approval from the state legislature. We were originally under the impression that there were like two times a year that this was happening. He clarified that actually it can happen more often, it can really happen anytime. However, time is of the essence, that we get the things to him that they need in order to move it forward. Piece that was kind of holding it up was an alternatives analysis that was being written up by, by Sean, which we voted on and approved at the meeting, as well as the appraisals of the land, which, you know, we had to go through an RFP process, and we only got those appraisals last week. So we now, I believe, have kind of all the pieces to submit to our representatives, or to our town council, who will then do a finalized document. We got an initial feedback, so it will send the finalized version out to our reps, who can then file with the appropriate committees and things within the new calendar year and push that forward. We're still, again, the ultimate timeline, hopefully have that approved by July. So that is, that's where the land swap piece stands. We also talked about MSBA update, which I think everybody's aware of, we were not selected by the MSBA within this round. They had a meeting about a week ago, we were notified, a little bit before. for us, but there's, you know, obviously work associated with putting together another proposal as we're moving forward with plans, things like that, but that's something we haven't discussed as a group yet, of if we'll submit another proposal. And I think those are all the updates. Anything?
I wasn't there, I'm sick.
That's right. I was, you're always there in spirit. Yeah, I think that's it. Any questions?
I was glad that Chris was able to attend.
Yeah.
I heard from Sean, he was excited that, so we're talking about him being the fourth member because of his expertise, his architectural expertise, that was, that was a nice synergy there.
Yeah. It's Chris Hayden.
Yes.
Great.
Thanks. So approval of minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 6th, 2023 Milton School Committee meeting.
Second.
Second. Does anyone have any discussion or edits? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Member Lauren?
Yes.
And Marissa, any?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So lastly, it's just our next meeting agenda items, January 3rd. So we'll have the FY '25 prioritized budget to vote on. We will also have the annual report to vote on, right? We will be talking again about the 24-25 school year calendar with some new information that you'll be bringing after the last discussion we had. And then we will also be having this, the superintendent's mid-year evaluation discussion. Anything else? Okay. I hope everybody has a great vacation. Happy holidays. Happy New Year. Let's try to put our feet up a little bit, because then we're gonna come back and it's gonna be right back at it. But thank you all. Please take the candy and cookies as we leave.
I'll be sure to take those cookies for you. I don't want them to go bad.
Anna, safe travels, enjoy your time with your family, and, yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda, I'm a yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great, thanks, everybody. Good night.[1702.23]